It is, okay, get that. Thank you. 7:04 PM and I will call the meeting to order of the Chappaqua Library Board of Trustees. We are in the library theater. The exits are numerous in front of us, behind us, and up through the theater into the body of the library. And with that, we'll give the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cut off. What were they? Okay. In terms of roll call, I'm Jennifer Fahy. I'm joined by Dana Wu, trustee and secretary, Bob Conrad, library director, Liz Hameson, member at large, prior president.
Past president.
Thank you. With us online is Brian Cook, our finance officer, and Pam Moskowitz, our vice president. And they are joining us remotely due to extraordinary circumstances. Okay, so first, I will begin. Do we have any need for executive session?
Madam President, I may have a need to leave and I know that it wasn't possible to extend additional virtual because of our circumstances that we were tapped. So I would just ask if we could prioritize like the bills because we know those have to get paid and things that are of utmost importance in the agenda, just so that if I do, which it may very well come to pass, that we at least take care of the most critical items.
Okay. Do you have a sense of timing?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So why don't we do this? Okay. Showing then all your ERPs, things that need votes.
Okay. Then we will, if everyone's in agreement, move ahead to the necessary motions. Shall we kick off with the financial statements first?
Yeah, I think so.
Brian, can you lead us off? Out of order with the financial statements.
I normally get a printout of this at the meeting. I don't have that today. What packet, which page, so I can quickly get to where we are. We're killing many trees this time, so I'll just share with Liz. Okay, it's just a lot here. And I'll just leave this all out.
Thank you, Brian.
I'm just looking for the report.
Okay. It's such a huge packet. It's hard to, yeah.
Yes, we apologize to the public. It's a very lengthy packet due to the amount of information needed to cover today.
All right, here it is. I think this is it here.
Brian, I can jump ahead with other motions if you prefer.
No, it's coming up right now on my computer.
Okay, thank you.
So this is Joe Gallo's report. Stated March 27th, I have prepared the statement of operating activities on a cash basis and the summary of restricted and board designated funds and the capital funds detail of the Chappaqua Central School District Public Library for the month of February 23, February 2023, and for the eight months ended February 28, 2023. I've also prepared the schedule of preauthorized expenditures from February 14th through 2023 through March 26, 2023, and the schedule of bills payable as of March 27, 2023. Information presented in the above referenced reports were derived from the data entered into the library's QuickBooks accounting program. The cash transactions are complete and in good order. I have reviewed the library's bank statements and the related reconciliations for February 2023. All bank accounts have been reconciled to the library's books with no exceptions noted. I have reviewed the supporting documentation for all items listed in the bills payable report and have signed the related checks presented to me. All documentation for these expenditures was in good order and all invoices were properly approved. Respectfully submitted, Joe Gallo, Treasurer. So that's the Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Brian.
Does anyone require any discussion?
Brian, you signed checks all month. Do you saw the invoices?
Yeah, the ones that I signed look good.
I think I know what Dan Ziger and Markoff is, and it's a quick thing. But I don't see the procedurally, all the invoices should come to our meetings. I know we're in the same building, but that's procedurally, we're supposed to have them here. But the only one I have a question on is the Markoff one, and I believe that's a Gatsby that we do every other year. Is that? Everybody's understanding?
That's correct.
Karen Markoff is our Gatsby.
Okay, and then we
Advisor.
I don't believe we ever made a motion, and if that was a single invoice for that amount, we would need to make a retroactive motion just to make that work because it's over the threshold.
Okay, that should have been addressed last year when they were engaged.
Well, then we have a motion. So if this is an old engagement, then we're fine, then just double check. But then we, then I would assume that we're totally fine. This is a two-year thing.
I know that to be fact because Brian and I have been achieving with Bob a three-year proposal for 2023, 2024, and 2025, which we will present later.
That's great. So that clears up my only question on this.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the February statements?
I make a motion to approve the February statements.
Okay, I second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, Brian. Since we're jumping around. Brian, could I ask you to give us?
And sorry, so then we have to say that we're going to pay the bill. We approved the financial statements.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the bills as presented?
And yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
Pam has seconded.
Okay.
All in favor? To approve the bills as presented. Thank you.
Janice?
Yes.
Okay.
So Brian, did you want to talk about Dan Ziger?
You mean Naraki Smith?
No. So we had invited, forgive me, not Dan Ziger, PKF O'Connor Davies to, and our auditors to attend the April 24th meeting where they will present the findings of their audit. That's tentatively scheduled, right? Great. Okay. Do you want to talk about the treasurer selection?
Yeah, we, we, we narrowed down our search and we identified Naraki Smith, who also happens to be the CCSD auditor. And they, they have several library clients, so they understand our needs. And I think they will be great. Chantel spent some time working with our person that would lead the team handling our account, and she vetted them. And Chantel's our staff assistant for the public and came away feeling very positively. So somewhere in the packet is the
We've got it.
The details, the scope of their engagement. Standard $1,800 a month for the majority of services. And then there's some additional work that may need to be performed around the audit. Although I think some of that we can take either in-house or achieve with some community support. And then they offer a lot of additional testing and auditing work that we can, if we wanted to beef up our internal controls, which is something I think we would all be interested in exploring and they can, they can give us some ideas there. So. Any questions?
Thank you.
One other point I would say is they initially came recommended to us by our accountant. And the references that I checked out were phenomenal.
Excellent. Did you have a question?
I guess the only outstanding question is that we saw the first draft budget a little over a week ago, and I'm, I, you know, it's not a matter of that they're not a good choice because they're clearly a qualified choice. But the, but the funding, because it looks like we don't have, like, where our budget is, needs to shrink in order to fit the tax cap and be reasonable. And so I'm concerned that we not, like, this is one place where we definitely don't need to pay. Or if we pay for this, we might want to consider not doing the annual audit because it's kind of overkill to have that much level of oversight on books. But, but again, my preference would be a community volunteer that lives here, breathes here, and, and sits beside us here, and we use that money in the salaries for sal, you know, that we need for salary for salary.
Thank you, Liz. I think that we've had extensive discussion on this. This has been underway since October, I believe. Thank you, all of you, for your patience in evaluating the various firms and individuals. I believe we're ready to
I'm so sorry. I can't, I, I'm sorry, Dana, this is yours. I'll give them back to you. I've got to go. I'm sorry, guys.
Everything okay?
The meeting. I think I have to fill this down.
All right.
I have no idea. Are you okay? Everything okay?
She clearly has something personal to attend to. We may not be able to take care of additional business, but there's plenty of remaining reports and discussion that can't lead to board business under your current bylaws, but that we can take care of.
Okay. Let's move forward. We'll agree on what we're going to have to address via special meeting. My apologies to everyone. Okay.
Let's see.
Okay, so that will be the first.
Things to vote. We can't vote now because we don't have a quorum.
Right, right, okay.
So we can have a concession. Okay, all right. So since we have some of the staff here, I'm going to move to the library market website design proposal, which we had at our meeting on the 16th of March, right? Bob had the staff, he had the, okay, just because I think that what we would need to vote on is to give the director the authority to enter into the contract, right? But let's just have some discussion around it generally because it's something that the staff has been working on. And I think that the public would be happy to know all of the pluses that are going to come with this product in terms of the clokeyness of our current website. So just maybe just take five, um, just to kind of give that feeling so that when we vote, we know that we've explained this additional expenditure, which is what Liz a little bit was getting to, her concern about that, that that.
Sure.
Okay.
So the first, the first thing that I could say is that if, if we could approve this library market product at this or even the April meeting or a special meeting in between, then the 20,000, that's a big ballpark figure. Actually, you may have, no, I will pull it from you now. The 20-some thousand that I budgeted for it next year will actually be paid out this year and relieve next year's budget of a good chunk of what we have earmarked for professional services. In fact, a lot of the additional expenses that Liz was referring to. Thank you, Jen. Total amount is closer to 31,400 for a new website. And as Dana asked, I'll get into the details of what that would cover. But my point is that would actually come out of this year's budget if it could be approved tonight or tomorrow and relieve the line that we've left with that on it for next year. And we could be spending that on the accounts, on the audit, and on certain one-time expenses we have selected in the budget for architectural input and design input on spaces like this theater. And the new, the newly built children's room needs a little assistance with furnishing. So that would have relieved next year's budget substantially if that could be approved.
Substantially, it just says here 50% upon signing and 50% at launch. So that was just part of our, our hope because the, the team, the communications team that have been working on it and reflecting it have actually done so much work ahead of time that we're hoping that this five-month calendar perhaps can be jump-started a little bit since, like, Amy Berger already knows what the database should look like or something like that. Okay. So that is part of the hope that that money can certainly hit as much in this year's budget as possible.
So some of the reasons that we need a new website is that it came up in conversations even before we ran our last five-year plan, that our website was looking just a little bit old and outdated. And it came up again in the preparation of the five-year plan. It was targeted as a website to have re-rebuilt. When we looked at companies that build library websites these days, or before my appointment, Library Market quickly emerged as an industry leader. They focus entirely and only on library websites. They do not build websites for small businesses or other not-for-profits. They only do public libraries. Hence, why it seems like so many of their offerings are tailored to our specific needs because we have the same needs as a lot of other public libraries. Among their offerings is a public-facing calendar that integrates nicely with our patron database. So for example, when you sign up an entire family for the same event, you can put in their library cards and they'll pull the data for you and you don't need to enter multiple email names and, and contact information for each registered person. You do need to enter each person that's registered, but it automates a lot of that and saves your system preferences and user profiles. Additional offerings on the website is we currently have only one or two authorized staff to make important updates as, as routine information changes. This will provide a much better platform for authorizing multiple department heads or users or library directors for uploading and making changes to the website.
I'm going to just interrupt you because that was something that we asked, that if we go ahead with this, who is the main contact to drive this project?
The main.
Because we have a five-month rollout. Hoping that it might go a little faster because of all the discovery that your team has already done, development stuff. But that to keep it on track and the ship floating, because it's a big project and it involves all the department heads and programming staff. So what, what is the discussion about?
The project lead would be a librarian too. We have an adult services by the name of Tao Wen. And she's actually been leading many of our website and communications initiatives for some time now. And the, the library's logo rebranding and subsequent additional rebranding initiatives. So in fact, one of the reasons that the website was put on the back burner long before I came on board is because they felt like they needed to get some of those graphic and identity questions answered before they could advance the website. So Tao Wen is the answer to that question. And I wanted to point out another workflow portion, this is really behind the scenes, but when we promote a program, we need to put it onto our calendar and then the various design people we have on staff make multiple iterations of different size and shaped images for this, for different purposes. Okay, we have one integrated platform for reaching one integrated website for reaching three social media platforms. But it doesn't shape things into the space that we need, the shape that we need for our own website banner. So we have additional people rebuilding things. This will seamlessly create a single point from which one person in charge of their own program or the designated design member of that department's team will be able to blast the graphic information out to all the bases that it needs. So those are some of the offerings. Libraries in the community who already use it include Scarsdale. And it came, I was asked to just check, sure, they're using it, how happy are they with using it? And namely with the responsiveness of their customer support. And the trustees saw the reply that I was able to procure from Scarsdale. It was overwhelmingly enthusiastic as multiple yeses. So I have a lot of confidence in this selection. And that's why I think it comes with the communication committee's recommendation. That was more than five minutes.
I think one of the most exciting things is that with this streamlined website, we will have greater productivity for our staff. So that frees them up to be more client patron facing, right?
That's right.
Okay, and then we did want, this is still, I think, an unknown answered question about the ability to have patron feedback, since we would be able to have things more integrated. So that is still something, as you are all looking at the capabilities, to make sure that that's something that we can capture. Because I think there are other, there are different modules in there. And also, one other question regarding the bills is that we are still paying for the top part. So we get this, that can go out with the counter. Yeah, right. Okay, so there might be some other savings that we could capture with this because we're getting rid of some other clunky things that we piece together.
I like your establishing a lifeline there for the confirmation.
Well, they're here, so let's use them. Use their expertise. Okay, so that's that, so.
If I could make a final point about costs, the annual maintenance cost moving forward is much more affordable after this initial five-month redesign and launch and the, the calendar.
Probably comparable to what we were paying NC and, and, you know, blah, 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 all the website support, so.
Well, it's considerably less than, I mean, we were paying, we were paying them in kind in office space. But if you were to give a monetary value to a month's rent, I mean, this, the ongoing service fee is
1,500.
Well, 3,500 a year. And that includes hosting, maintenance, and a calendar component.
Good. Okay, so that's, that's two votes. Our new treasurer and our website designer. I'm going to return to the agenda. We need to can we accept the minutes without a quorum?
No, I don't think anything left.
The answer is no, you can't.
Okay, so that gets added to the list. For my president's report, I was in honored to attend candidate's night as hosted by the League of Women Voters to represent the library. It was a dual event for the CCSD Board of Education candidates, as well as the library trustee candidates. It was a stormy night, but, but we had a decent turnout. Jane Shepherdson spoke on behalf of the Board of Education, and I spoke on behalf of the library. And there was good interest with, with respect to the seats for both organizations. So that was exciting. Just to confirm for the public, and there's information on this on our website, we are seeking two trustees. The first would be for five years, July 1st, 2023 to June 30th, 2028. The second would be for the remainder of a vacated term, so that would take near immediate effect in May 2023 to June 30th, 2026. I also wanted to touch on, as Dana mentioned, we had a special meeting on March 16th, where we covered a number of important topics, including the budget review as of the March 10th version this website that Bob's finished speaking or presenting to, as well as our library director's performance through Q1, which really worked out to about four months. Finally, I wanted to touch on, and Bob will have additional comment. With everything that's happening in the banking industry, we wanted to confirm the protections in place. So we set up a call with our banking partner, Valley National. We have confirmation of the custodian arrangement as required under the state of New York. And that is with Bank of New York, and the agreement is in our packet. So Bank of New York is certainly, I think, a good, solid custodian. When we meet by special meeting to review all the matters up for vote, I would like to propose splitting the funds, even though Valley National and Bank of New York are good partners for the library. I think some diversification with everything that we've been experiencing in the US, as well as what we're seeing internationally, could make good sense. And that would involve Bob having to research an additional banking relationship and securing the custodian with respect to that relationship as well. So interested to know amongst the board and Bob, if there's any thoughts in that regard, discussion. We won't be taking a vote, but just interested in your views. Brian, did you freeze on us? Oh, there you are.
I'll be interested to see what, what banks Bob comes up with in the, in the search. Valley, Valley is of the banks that we've been reading about in the news. They're in healthy shape, so.
Yes, good. Okay. Bob, do you want to turn to your director's report?
I'll lead. I'll lead off my director's report explaining that I finished the annual report to New York State. And I want you and the public to understand that this report that I finished was for fiscal year 21 through 2022, 2021 through 2022. But it includes all of the summer reading program from 2022, which actually falls beyond that particular fiscal year. That's just because we happen to fall on a July through fiscal year cycle. It's nothing unusual for school district-type public libraries. But just bear in mind that I was reporting on a fiscal year that started not just before I became director, but you know, over a year and a half ago. So a copy of the full report was attached in my direct.
The report is a New York State report, but it's filed through WLS?
That's right. And when I click send, it goes to WLS for review. They look for, well, I don't know exactly what they look for, but they look for flagged items and they're basically fact-checking it. And then it ultimately does go to DLD, the Division of Library Development. And I think I've answered that question. So moving on, I attached a copy and the state requires that an additional public-facing report, which we also call the annual report, get presented to It presented to the Chappaqua resident voters. And I don't yet see how this library has traditionally published their public facing report. But in the past, I've always included it in our budget newsletter. So if I can, in the next four to six weeks. Before our budget newsletter goes to bed. I would like to incorporate a lot of the statistical and qualitative information from my annual report. Into the next budget newsletter, so look for that.
Sorry, are you talking about the mailer?
I am talking about the mailer, yes.
Which is normally a single.
Two paper, yeah.
Okay, and you'd like to make it bigger or, or?
I could try to squeeze more in, but I would recommend the addition of a page.
Okay, and how about the timing for our paper mailer newsletter?
The, the paper mailer program newsletter, we still have one more scheduled for this budget cycle. But we internally were discussing, I was just discussing it this afternoon with Tao, and she's going to lead the. Website project. We thought that a good message for this final one of the fiscal year would be to say that. We are gonna. Put the program newsletter on the back burner while we rebuild and launch the website. And highly recommend to our public to subscribe to the e-program newsletter, which is more current anyway. And then after the website launches, we would return to the program mailer. And decide if it was still an effective use of library funds. So we were just discussing that today.
So can we look into perhaps using the extra page, as you call it? For the annual report and attaching it to that as well or somehow? Because that has a lot of programming information, judging from what this report has. You're, you're calling it annual report to the community, but actually there's a lot of programming stuff and that that. Paper mailer is programming oriented, maybe there's a way of. Doing a nice chart or something that kind of shows some of the programming stats.
If you're talking about a combined mailer, it would really depend on when their deadlines fall. So it's, it's possible.
Okay, we're in control of the deadline, right?
Well, it has to know.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, I know that that budget mailer has to go out the day after we make presentations for the. School district, but saying the other piece of it, the paper mailer. That maybe there's a way of incorporating some of the statistics into that. That are program related.
I would agree that maybe there is.
Okay, we can get to that.
I'm gonna report on some operational developments that.
Sorry, so can I go into this report then, since it's here?
Sure, absolutely.
We're not voting on anything, right, okay, so if I look at this annual report and I see, for example, under. Non-electronic material here, so like down, audio downloadable units, and then non-electronic materials. So we're showing an increase. Marginal, okay, it says total electronic materials, it went up eight thousand. But then when we go here to like, electronic additional holdings, it goes up nineteen thousand. That unit twenty. Twenty-eight, like two point two eight? Oh, okay. Okay.
Two point two eight, is that the one you're looking at?
Yeah, I was just wondering.
When, I'll, I'll let you ask your question before I try to answer.
The numbers just, you know, struck, struck at me, I had not seen this report before. So just some of the ones that were like that, and some of the programming information for, for example. When it says like. Collaboration with. School districts, ESOL classes, some of those other things, it just sort of struck me that those were measures that we're reporting on. And then some of those measures, you know, were not as robust as I would hope, like.
And then others were much more robust. But what I would say, for example, whenever the report detects a wide variance. From one year to the next, it actually asks the director to flag it with a note. And I need to investigate why there's a variance and come up with an explanation to add to the note field. So the one that you just asked about electronic material, this is electronic materials holdings, not circulation. So the number of electronic materials that we subscribe to through databases. Changed from about thirty-three thousand six hundred to about fourteen thousand eight hundred, a big change. So when I was asked to investigate, why is such a big change in your electronic holdings? I found that a large drop in additions to electronic materials holdings this year. Maybe due to Overdrive's acquisition of RV Digital in the prior reporting year. Adding some ten thousand magazine titles and multiple book titles to their platform. So the prior year, thirty-three thousand. Was a large number of electronic materials to add in one year.
Right.
Why? Whereas the fourteen thousand we added, that's a lot more like a normal year.
So it was an artificial spike.
Not even artificial, but it's just a report. And we're just reporting on what happened.
Right.
So whenever there's a large swing. It's explained in a note field that was printed in this report. And the kinds of statistical representations of a library that may be more important to the public, like. Material circulation and, and checkouts and downloads. Those numbers are all on the upswing, but of course they're on the upswing. From the prior year, which was a big COVID fiscal year.
Yeah.
So all of our numbers are looking really good in this report. And the hope is that in next year's report, which will be on the current fiscal year that we're in. That next year's report will sustain many of our valuable increases, that's the hope. But it's also unfortunately the director's job to accurately report. When we take losses to things like circulation and program attendance. So yes, I think if I can summarize what you're asking for Dana, yeah, that's. That kind of analysis of what happened in this reporting year is exactly what I like to shovel into an annual report to the public. Which. I've, I've double ended into the budget newsletter, because it's a good time to become aware of those things. Independently of the upcoming month's programs.
Well, we look forward to seeing either an example of what you've used in the past or a draft for the coming year. The coming deadline. Dana also caught some. We're gonna have to make some corrections in terms of director terms, et cetera, in this document, so.
Oh, please.
We'll circle back on that.
Please, yeah, there is time for me to get corrections to WLS. They just need to reopen the report for me to make them. Okay, so let me continue with my director's report, the.
Thank you, Dana.
Chantel was here right now and is our staff assistant and I. We both got brand new computers and we finally have access to a shared file or. Sharing documents that will go into these board packets. And we also got our new laptops, so I feel like, I think of my words to Jen, I feel like a new library director. I feel like I've been given the tools that I need to do the job. We're getting there. I have additional department head reports. Reporting additional changes to certain operational functions. And I apologize for not summarizing them all into my director's report. This is the first time I'm adding these kinds of developments to the director's report. And the recommendation to purchase library market, we addressed. Relevant statistics is the routine monthly statistics that we show you, those were sent as an attachment. One of the findings from our circulation department head was that. And to be expected is that overdue fine revenues are down about twenty percent. Since the introduction of auto renewal and a trustee who is very focused on library fine. Revenues. That might alarm them, oh my gosh, revenues are down twenty percent, and I would say, no, no, don't look at it that way. Because we're not in, our mission is not to find the public or collect fines. Our mission is to provide information and access to the public. And what is not measurable and not reportable to you or the public is patron satisfaction. We can only get that anecdotally and everything we've gotten from the front desk. And from, I've heard from trustees experiencing this themselves, is delight. When they find that something that they thought was overdue was automatically renewed instead, so. Try to solicit those responses from your constituents and let us know if you find as we do. I do have a personnel recommendation. And I slid that into my director's report, my recommendation is for an hourly wage increase. Is this? The time?
Sure, and then we'll vote on it in the next meeting.
Okay, right.
But I do have a question about the wording of this, because we initially had the wording to match what happened in July. Which was an impressive equivalent of the department head stipend, but this is hourly wage, so.
You're correct, I converted the stipends into a wage increase, that's my recommendation. And the reason I was just given pause and said to Jen, should we introduce this now, is because I think we were checking on. With the attorney on the feasibility of that, Howard was checking with Christopher, so.
But it had been approved in July.
Okay, I believe you. You're saying. You're saying we don't need to approve this wage increase?
No, then it was taken away and we had wanted to reinstate it, right?
Right.
Which is what he's proposed.
It's just the wording is different.
The wording is different.
We'll make sure when we make the formal motion that we utilize appropriate language.
Okay, I just don't know why I have to go to council.
What was the question?
Timing.
I, I, I think our, yeah, our biggest question was whether we could make a wage increase retroactive to a prior date. That was the legal question. Okay, so that won't happen today anyway.
I'm trying to say that it's not an hourly wage increase. Maybe that's the wording that it needs, but it was not the wording in July.
I agree with you, but my recommendation was to pass it to the wage increase. You could do, you could do whichever you like.
Okay.
Just as a cleaner approach.
The bank stability issued, I, I don't have anything to say that Jen didn't just say, just to look for the attachments that I included. And I included a couple of articles from the news. About something going on in the library world, which could have been a very big deal. Except that. The Internet Archive lost their case. And I learned that just the night that I was preparing these documents, so I included that as a news update. So here's the story, is the Internet Archive had already been spearheading something called Open Libraries. And what they were doing is scanning physical copies of books that they owned. And they were really pioneering a service called that they called Controlled Digital Lending. And it was pretty much an extrapolation of sections one hundred seven and one oh eight of the copyright law. One oh seven covers fair use and one oh eight covers library and its libraries. Library specific preservation uses to make photo and. Fono recordings and other forms of copies of things that we purchased. And what they were doing was circulating digital copies that they created. In limited numbers that they controlled, so controlled digital lending. And nobody particularly cared that they were doing it, because they were circulating one copy at a time, two copies at a time. But what happened is during COVID, when most of the country's public libraries shut down all at once. They stopped artificially limiting the number of digital copies that they were controlled lending in this way. And the publishing industry, all five of the main publishers. We currently license ebooks. From the publishing industry, mostly through a middleman named Overdrive. But through some other channels as well. Publishing industry said, hold on, stop your horses, we're actually making a good chunk of money with. Licensing ebooks and we don't want you to do what Internet Archive thought the law permitted them to do. So it's not a service that we as a library were offering in that way ourselves. But if Internet Archive had won the case, they would have been pioneering it for all libraries. As something that we could begin to digitize the books that we purchased and making limited controlled digital lending of. One of the reasons we didn't pioneer that ourselves is because the staff time, the expertise, the scalability, the infrastructure, all of those other reasons. For us, it's just easier and cheaper to license. But in the near future, as the technology changes, it might have been nice. Well, of course, the Internet Archive is going to appeal and so the technology, the law supporting the technology could change again. You could write to your Congress critters and say, hey, what the Internet Archive was doing. I, I love what they were doing or I hate it, take whatever position you like. But I was sharing this with you and my interpretation, my understanding of it, because you might get these questions, oh, what? What does this lawsuit mean for the Chappaqua library? Well, right now it doesn't change anything about the way that we do. If the Internet Archive eventually wins an appeal, it could radically change. The current ebook lending models, which are frankly very. Public library unfriendly right now. Any questions about? That issue or why I included those news articles? Any additions from the staff or public? No, okay, I don't think I can call for public comment anyway. And then finally, I included the standard department head reports, but if I understand. Your instructions correctly, I should begin integrating more of their content into my report.
I think it's great for the community to see those reports, they're excellent. But.
But I should spend more time.
It's great to hear your suggestion.
Great, so you can look forward to those in future months. And that in total completes the library director's report.
So we'll make.
So I'm sorry, if I could just interject, so on this New York State annual report that we have, right? That you just, that you just told, you know, said, and for example, under early literacy, there's a bunch of categories here. When I look at the children's report, actually, I feel like we're doing a lot of that early literacy. Is it just that we don't check them off that way, like bouncing babies, you know? Is it just that it's not checked off so that next year it would be reflected under early childhood or? There are questions, so early literacy, we do start off the one that is focused for children. But some of the others are with a focus to parents and caregivers, that is not the primary focus of the program, and so. It's not something that we actually put on.
Okay.
You, you would also, Dana, have to be looking at the children's room reports from two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two.
Right, I'm saying going forward, so when I look here under early literacy program, it's just, you know, where it's like, no, but I, I feel like we, we have done a lot. But I understand it's not focused on parents and caregivers, so we can't check that as a yes. Even though we have a program called Bouncing Baby.
Yeah.
And the babies aren't reading, so it is the parents and the caregivers that are doing the reading. But I'm just asking, where do we tick off the box so that we can say yes next year?
Trying to show off the library to its best listening advantage. Yeah, exactly.
I think some of the other children's wondering about whether there are tweaks we might want to make to that program in particular, is a good option.
Yeah.
So that it's one that really has a combined audience.
Great. Good point.
And, and just to be off, but you know, we have two new grandmas here, so I'm sure you're gonna come with, with your little ones to the bouncing babies, right?
Exactly.
So congratulations to Jen and Pam on their new addition.
Thank you. Thank you. Brian, is there anything further to add from the finance committee?
Nothing from our end.
Um, nothing from our end.
We don't want to talk about the budget?
Do we want to go through the budget?
Bob, is there anything on the budget? You included the budget here. I don't think we've had a real presentation of the public, so since we're just in discussion mode, is there anything that?
There, I don't have anything to discuss at this time. What I would, what I do need to have though is by the April meeting. A final version for the board's approval and between now and then, there are changes I might make to the uh. Exactly how those personnel dollars are spent and um as we just learned tonight, the. The amounts for professional services are in discussion.
Right, and and there was a lot of commentary on March sixteenth and some commentary that we just ran out of time, so we definitely need to.
So on page six of eight, I'm a budget that's submitted in the backup here under professional fees and weather question at our meeting that Liz. Uh, highlighted, which I think we are trying to drill down a little bit more because it says one hundred and forty-two percent increase in professional fees. So um Brian, if you see it, the backup. So A says capacity, B says background screening, C says audit. D says attorney fee, E says GATV audit, then the F is we're just talking about the website that if we can't. Get this done this fiscal year, that this number will go down to just the um three thousand five hundred for the annual. And then because it said half upon launch, so it's just that would be a much smaller number under F.
We're just shifting it from one year to the other, so it's a.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then the treasure, you think this nineteen two, I don't have an Iraqi number.
It's gonna be a little bit higher. Um, we were paying sixteen months, hundred a month and Iraq is gonna be eighteen hundred a month.
Okay, right. And then this I, this was the question that we had, the I here, which was architect, designer. Consultants, children's theater at sixty-five thousand.
Yeah, that's that's um should be considered one off. It's a, it's a capital improvement. I don't have a lot of details on the, you know. How the money's being, how the program is being run there. Um, but it's it's not a recurring item.
So it could possibly go to capital if we needed. If we had expenses that were appropriate for capital, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Me, um, what I would say is that we, capital funds have to be spent on something that stays in the library, a thing. Uh, or an improvement that stays in the library, but when we pay the architects, designers or consultants or engineers. That has to come out of the professional fees, which if in one year, we have a lot of. Additional professional fees, which is frankly what we're proposing, then it becomes a one year increase to the operating budget. But you would want to take it out in future years if the goal is not to sustain that as an ongoing operating expense. Right, so I would say no, we can't just pay for it out of the capital funds. Um, but yes, we could not budget for it. Spend it anyway and then you're pulling it out of the um library's cash reserves that way, but I wouldn't recommend that.
Anything else you wanted to touch on at this time? There's a lot more to talk about with the budget certainly.
No, we just wanted to follow up on that because that was a question that was raised. Question, Dana.
Thank you. Okay, Pam, you wanna lead us on policies and bylaws?
My computer just unmuting just takes a little bit of mo, you know, a little bit of time in our forty ninth state. Okay, hi, everybody. Um, so all of the policies, all of the Chapua Library policies have been reviewed. And we are, the policy committee is in the process of merging and merging most of them into each other. So there'll be a reduced number of policies and we will be, the plan is to reformat the policy page. The American Library Association policies, those are our freedom to, the freedom to. Uh, read, freedom to view, they will, the library bill of rights, they will also be sectioned off into their own. Into their own section. So many, um, I shouldn't say many, some of our, our policies are missing certain forms. So and so those forms have to be done, which we're working on now, and then they can be sent off to, for final. Approval through the trustees and through our attorneys. Um, but we're really, you know, excited about an easier. Policy page with um easier to read policies as well as um better organized. Or easily organized and um and of course, always as new policies need to. Get made uh uh as uh need to get written as we have had them um written, including what's happening tonight with. Remote trustee train, with remote trustee attendance, we will continue to do that. Um, in talking uh in now, do you have any, anybody have any questions about the policies?
Thank you for.
Of course.
Bringing them current and organizing them for better.
I, it's, you know, it's definitely taking the team and, you know, I appreciate Bob's work on this and his experience as well as. Other people in the library, including, you know, who work on the museum passes and the finds, uh, it's circulation, everybody, so it's really a team effort. Um, moving on to bylaws, uh, I I, you know, we're currently, I'm not, I. I'm not quite ready for the committee to come forward with a particular by, a particular. Um, change that we're talking about making to the, to the Chapua Public Library bylaws. Um, we will, we are still in the beginning stages of talking about trustee. Um, just general trustee for the library, if we should increase the board. If, you know, having a discussion about uh a different, you know, changing a five-year, ten-year, a tenure. So um I am hoping that we will be able to make, you know, a better presentation, a more informed presentation. Over than, certainly for the next board meeting, um, or at least like where, where we are starting with that.
Great. And in April, we're likely to come forward with um advice of a. Or of a charter amendment that we will be seeking that will address some of those issues you mentioned.
Absolutely, correct.
Okay, as reviewed by council.
As reviewed by council, absolutely. Thanks, Dana.
Okay, Jen, if I can interrupt with a point of order, I just wanted Chantel to notice. It looks from here like your laptop battery is really low and I don't know if that's accurate or not. But we don't want that to go out during the uh.
It was giving me a warning, but there's.
All right.
Okay.
Well, I think we took a lot of time on the library matters. I want to say again, the committee that presented to us. All the work that's been on there, I think it accomplishes a lot of the goal that we stated in the long range plan. I'm very happy that there's someone to steer the ship with, you know, under Bob's direction and in coordination with all the other. Um, staff here to to really get this uh necessary since, you know, uh, carrying all that. In the transition, but it just sort of worked out and if we can get it rolling, I, you know, I think that's a great accomplishment that we can all be. Happy to to give the public a much more, I think one of the most um significant things in the presentation was that they said. If you wanted to type in something like cups on the website, it wouldn't tell you what programs we have on cups. It might give you books, but that's a separate, that's the um evergreen, right? Like, there's just very, our website is so antiquated and so clunky. That and there's so much redundancy and work that every time we have to do something, it makes for more errors, right, or possibility of errors. But just like things like that, I really appreciate that the staff was so thorough in their presentation and, you know, I think that we're all behind it. So that's, that's great if we can have a special meeting to um authorize the director to engage library matters, get that going.
Like remark it.
Well, I'm sorry. My remark, close.
Okay, uh, I'll move to building and grounds just to try and hit some of the highlights. On page five of the presentation, we've outlined the three proposals obtained. This is a proposal to evaluate uh and come up with a plan to address. Uh, our lovely library facade from nineteen seventy-eight is undergoing some weakness. Things are falling off. It 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 needs um ongoing improvement. And so we're evaluating the facade and the. Driveway and front and freeway together with the water feature at the entrance of our library. As well as the library has two inner courtyards, one associated with the children's area and one that we call the main courtyard. Which is used for a lot of programming events in the um better weather areas of the year. Uh, so we solicited proposals from six design firms, so generally a combination of an architect with a design firm. And received three uh valid proposals that that met our specifications. So the Building and Grounds Committee, together with our facilities consultant, reviewed the proposals against a, and our library director. Uh, we viewed the proposals against a scorecard and determined that. Um, certainly on price, but um also on capabilities and the way they were parsing the different aspects. Of the uh proposal, uh, our recommendation, which we will address in the subsequent meeting with the motion. Will be to accept a proposal from KG and D. Uh, that proposal is for thirty-two thousand dollars. KG and D also does, while they were involved with the renovations. Uh, including the children expansion of the children's area, the gallery walk, et cetera. Uh, and they do extensive work for CCSD, our school district. Other material items, we have two proposals.
So with the um replacement of the analog signs, the digital version. So is that digital version something that would be controlled through the stratagem or how would that interface?
We know yet. Or so this is just um the selection of an architect designer. And that goal was stated as part of what we're asking them to determine. We also have, it's a great question, we also have uh requests out to stratagem. Uh, or ways to incorporate that into the system that they're installing. But I can't give you any certainty at this point in time.
Okay.
Just that we have a number of.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Considering this, because we do think it's important, it's um, it's a productivity issue as well. Um, takes a lot of time to do those manual signs. Um, so the other thing I'll draw your attention to on page eight. Uh, we have two of what we hope will be three proposals. The two vendors offered proposals in February. We've got one pokey vendor um still to come to us. We, in the next special meeting, will ask the board. To grant approval for uh the current um best case uh price of twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. From Armistead and if obviously if we obtain a third proposal that is more favorable, we will go with that. Uh, this is for a chiller replacement. It's something our consultant has been, has identified since I want to say September. Uh, as something we were going to have to address Q one. Um, one other issue, I'll remind um. Couple of those present on page ten, we've got our upcoming resurfacing of the south parking lot and driveway. Uh, and Bob, as a reminder, we need you um to check with the town. And make sure that we can arrange parking for patrons and employees. Um, and was also going to ask you, Dana, as a member of the parish for the Virgin Mary. Uh, to see if they could permit perhaps employee parking during this three-day event.
I guess.
Yeah, and it's not yet determined, so it would be a conceptual agreement at this point in time. Think those are the most relevant points for building grounds in association with that. I'll, I'll speak to them now, um, even though we'll vote subsequently. Um, the proposal from stratagem for uh the burglary and fire. We misstated in the last meeting, uh, we were missing the proper attachment and cited it as, oh no, forgive me. I'm speaking of Atlantic Westchester. Atlantic Westchester is the firm that manages our HVAC systems and they gave us a proposal to upgrade to Merf thirteen filters. We approved that in our last board meeting for twenty-five hundred dollars. The correct amount as documented here is twenty-two thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Additional proposals um we'll be speaking to will be stratagem, our security company going forward. Um, who has offered us a proposal for burglary and fire monitoring. Uh, that amount is two thousand five hundred twenty-eight and thirty-seven cents. That is the one-time cost for the installation um and upgrade of that system. Then there will be an ongoing monitoring cost, which we'll be presenting in the subsequent meeting. Let's see, we have a proposal from Automated Control Logic. This is the company that manages the website. Um, whereby our facilities consultant, our library director are able to look online. And see how all the various aspects of our building equipment are operating, uh, temperature, efficiency, et cetera. And they have told us that this system is antiquated and and requires an upgrade. So they presented two proposals um on the basis of whether the library will provide a laptop for that system. Uh, or whether they will provide a laptop. So the differential is um. Forgive me, four thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars if they provide the laptop or two thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. If we provide the laptop. Let's see. I mentioned.
Where does the laptop stay?
In a room that is effectively a rocked out office for our facilities consultant. As well as custodial staff.
But the person doesn't have to come here to work on that one laptop, do they? If there's a.
The the tweaks to the program can be done remotely by ACL. Uh, and our facilities consultant or.
That makes sense.
On site, including by Bob. But the laptop sits here.
Uh, the back phone, right?
Exactly, exactly. So I think those are the proposals. Dana, did you have anything to offer up relative to HR guidance, or excuse me, governance? I know you've been doing.
So we did meet and we are going to meet again on Thursday. I think that um. The main recommendation we have been um mulling with Bob is to shore up the administrative functions. That were decimated, maybe that's the right word, over time, and that we need to replenish to make the operations happen. More efficiently, um, even though we have a fantastic staff assistant, she's just one person. And only doing what is humanly possible. Uh, I think the uh discussion was for more secretarial help. And to divide functions that are already divided uh between March and the um payroll functions and other things. To have some redundancy as well as to have some backfilling functions, right? So that's really where we were discussing in terms of the administrative, that seems to be the priority right now.
That's correct. Uh, Chantel is performing the duties that previously two and a half people used to perform. So we've proposed adding a, an executive secretary to the dri, library director. Um, we also have Chantel's, um, you know, she, she can't be, not only is she doing the work in two and a half people. But she eventually will earn vacation time and leave time of her own, so we'll need people that can, as, as you said, switch off on.
And I think that we heard that from the department heads as well, but that was. And I think that we heard that from the department heads as well, because that was a function, especially even on the HR side, that there was just some holes that we would like to try to address. But we will look at the work chart and some other things at our meeting on Thursday.
Right. Thank you. I know the committee's been doing a ton of work. Thank you. Okay. If that includes the bulk of our business, I think we can turn to any public comments, Chantel. If anyone has any public comments, please just raise your hand and we'll admit you. Okay, all right. Oh, forgive me.
I'm good.
No update tonight? Okay, any commentary in terms of next steps, Dana?
No, I mean, we haven't even voted. We do have a working session planned, and perhaps we can take some of the votes then, since we all have it on our calendar. Is that okay?
Yeah, might seek out people's availability for an earlier short call.
Well, we have, we have the holiday coming up. I think that makes it difficult, but we do have that day. So let's just put it out there that all the votes that could not get done tonight will have to address
Worst case.
Worst case, or, you know, if not sooner than that, at least that's the day that we all have our work session.
So we have a special meeting on Thursday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty three. And part of our discussion at that point as a board will be to focus on staffing benefits, the employee handbook and policies. And that will be held in the program room. Then our next regular meeting will be Monday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty three, at seven PM back in the Chappaqua Theater. We apologize for an odd meeting. This time, we'll get back on track. But people's personal lives do intervene for this board of volunteers. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn at eight eighteen, looks like to me? Pam?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to end our meeting at eight eighteen.
Okay, Brian, second it.
Yeah. All in favor? Aye, aye, unanimous.
Yeah. Although, doesn't matter, does it? They all have three here.
Right, we're technically not adjourned.
Adjourned.
Forever.
Right. Thank you for joining us online. We very much appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank
Thank you. Thank you.